Feel better?
A lot of blue today.
A long process.
Or you really feel like...
Even for the summer, I just can't do it. Sorry.
You got like an intermission.
I would like to call to order the March meeting of the Morrisville Planning and Zoning Board. If you will join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Any changes to the agenda? I will take a motion to approve the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Unanimous? And I apologize, I should jump in and introduce our new members. We have Kristin and Sushama. Sushama is going to be an alternate, Kristin will be a full member, so everyone welcome them. Anyone look at the minutes, are there any changes to the minutes? I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries? Thank you. Do we, I do not see anyone, I don't think there's anyone for public comment here. Okay, we will move on to the new business. The proposed master sign plan for Southport. Nice to meet you.
Okay, thank you, sorry about that. So as we can see here, there is a table for the overall proposed quantities and type for each proposed sign, including their respective locations on the map. So firstly, the applicant is proposing two of the Type A ground sign plan, signs. These are comparable to the Type A monument signs in Section 5.16 of the UDO. The applicant is requesting thirty-eight square feet and then a second face right here of eight square feet for each respective sign face. And they both have a max height of six point five feet and four point five feet. Just generally, as a reminder, the master sign plan allows the applicant to propose their own dimensional standards for a sign permit, and when those sign permits are applied for, they will be compared to the approved master sign plan and won't set a precedent for changing any section of the UDO. So ground level has provided lettering dimensions, which are repeated for monument sign A, B, and C. So these are the, like, the little letters, and then, as we can see, this one is for the logo, and so that's repeated on sign times A, B, and C. So the second proposed type is two Type B signs. This sign type could be compared to the town sign, the ground A monument signs. And so for this one, the applicant is proposing a sign face of, again, thirty-eight square feet and then three square feet for the second sign face, both with a max height of four feet. The applicant is also proposing a Type C wayfaring sign. And this is, again, similar to those monument signs that we spoke of previously. They're proposing a maximum height of six and a half feet, a sign face of thirty-eight square feet again, because of that Southport logo, and then a total length of sixty feet. So these are the newer sign types that they're also proposing, they're proposing three different amenity type signs. And this one is not to exceed sixteen, oh, sorry, thirty-eight square feet of sign face area. Scroll down real quick so we can see more of that. Okay, so part of that amenity sign that we just discussed, they're also proposing these bench type signs, and they are being applied for in conjunction with some amenity upgrades that have come through with a minor modification. These letters, the sign face, will be approximately sixteen square feet for the lakeside and eight square feet for the dime. The next sign that they are also proposing, these are newer signs that aren't really covered in the UDO. So these are the building identification and pedestrian wayfaring signs. They are requesting four of these trail marker signs, each of which would have approximately two square feet in sign face area. In addition to that, these wayfaring signs are these trail marker signs. They're proposing twenty-three of them, each with a four square feet of sign face. The applicant also provided some notes with the plan that the future signage for each type will be, you know, put in at the included locations, and future amendments to the sign plan will be handled through town staff, through the minor modification process. Additionally, dimensions of each sign type will not exceed what has been represented in the application, and ground signs will not interfere with sign triangles at the intersections. We checked with the engineering technician on staff, and he was okay proceeding with no interference in that regard. Additionally, they will be internally lit by low voltage landscaping lighting, and then the lighting fixture cut sheets will be submitted to the owner for approval. And then, again, this application has been submitted in conjunction with those amenity upgrades to the campus. So staff recommends approval of the master sign plan application for the following reasons. It complies with the stated purpose of regulations in the UDO, Section 5.16.1A. The request does not include any prohibited signs as identified in the UDO, Sections 5.16.2D, 5.16.2E, and 5.16.2F. It does not include any temporary signage, and the applicant is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and it does not conflict with any other provisions of the UDO or the Morrisville ordinance, excuse me, ordinances. So here is the ordinance language for the board's motion. The board is asked to either recommend approval to Town Council of the sign plan as presented, and then recommend approval with changes or recommend denial. So that's all I have for you, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, May. So let's start with Sushama, do you have any comments? You can say no, if you thought it was a great presentation and you're fine with everything, you can certainly...
I don't have any questions at this time.
Kristin?
No comments from me.
I don't either.
The only comment I had was sparked, you said twenty-three, but it said seven in the presentation earlier for the trail signs. Now, I don't know that it even matters, but it just, it was actually one of the, like, maybe twelve, slide twelve or something?
I apologize for the confusion, there's two different type of wayfinding signs.
It does say twenty-three.
Okay, sorry.
It says, yes, alright, that's fine, okay. Yeah, and then the comment that was just with the landscaping lighting, it says internally lit with landscaping lighting. Generally, I associate low voltage landscaping lighting with something that's external to the sign shining up on it. So, I mean, is there a conflict there, or?
No, I wouldn't say so.
So, I mean, it's going to be internally lit with, like, sign light, I mean, like, I guess...
It's essentially sign lighting comparable to landscaping lighting, like, the low voltage kind of highlighting. So instead of it shining up, oh, sorry, at the sign, it will be internally lit.
So maybe lighting onto the back of, from the letters onto the back of the, whatever, either concrete or wood that it's on?
Is that a question? Sorry.
Yeah, yeah, well, I mean, you're saying landscaping lighting, I mean, you're not saying it's going to be shining onto the sign. It's going to be from behind the sign, potentially, or within the sign.
The sign itself will be illuminated, the internal electrics will be the lighting. Does that clarify?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, sorry.
I just want to make sure that I understand, the applicant is requesting a waiver from the UDO to increase the size faces?
So a master sign plan is basically a development application that provides signage for an entire campus, and it won't change the UDO in every way. When they come in for sign permits, they will be compared to this approved application.
I mean, my only concern is that for the Type A signs, they're requesting a sign face that's six square feet bigger than what the UDO calls for maximum, and then Type B, if my math is correct, is twenty square feet bigger than what the UDO maximum is, and it kind of like, well, why have a UDO?
That's a great question. I would say that we have these regulations for specific signs for other developments, but for a master sign plan, we allow them a little bit of leeway because it's such a large campus throughout.
Understood, and I'm not going to question why they need to increase the sizes so much. I guess they have their reasons for visibility and safety and things like that. It just struck me that they're requesting such a big increase in size.
And again, these are the maximum extent, the application allows for it to be smaller than that. This is just so they can have more wiggle room, so to speak.
And just quickly, so in these square foot calculations, are they doing like a box around the overall sign? Are they actually doing the exact sort of angle, everything calculated perfectly?
So for some of them, it is exactly calculated, like, for this one, you know, we can see the two feet by one foot, two face sign area, not taking into account...
I like this particular idea specifically, that I like these internal wayfinding for pedestrian signs, because you go around a lot of office parks and you sort of know what's where.
Yeah, I love a good sign. But then for, again, the logo, we can, we can see that this, the lettering has been calculated for the sign face area and not taking into account the...
Any other questions? So I will entertain a motion to approve or deny the request.
Make a motion? To make a motion to approve ordinance 2024-74-0 of the Morrisville Town Council approving a master sign plan for the Southport Innovation Campus located at 991 Aviation Parkway, MSP-23-2.
We have a second?
Second?
Any other discussion of the motion? All in favor? Alright, did you get that, all against? Okay, so unanimous? Everyone voted yes?
No, I voted no.
Okay, you voted no, okay, so we have one no, okay, thank you. Okay, the motion carries, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, everyone, for your time, appreciate you.
And we can move on to the sort of catch-all UDO changes.
Good evening, thank you Chairman Langston, good evening, members of the board, and good evening to our newest members. My name is Elliot Ward, I'm one of the planning managers, it's nice to meet you both. Okay. So this evening, I'm presenting item 2024-46-0. This is consideration proposed UDO text amendments related to masonry painting, greenhouses, nursery, tobacco and hemp sales, and stormwater management. It's just a brief overview of the sections the proposed amendments will be covering and the corresponding UDO sections. I'll be getting into more detail of each of these as we move through the presentation. Also, I do apologize, the slide numbers got messed up on here, so we will correct those before we get to Town Council, but they're a little all over the place in that order. Let's, so we'll begin with tobacco and hemp product retail sales. So staff proposes an amendment to the principal use table 4.2.4 to include tobacco and/or hemp as a principal permitted use in the following zoning districts. Neighborhood Activity Center, Business Activity Center, Community Activity Center, Regional Activity Center, Corridor Commercial, Office Institutional, and Industrial Management. The request is primarily to align with language adopted by Wake County applying minimum distance requirements for tobacco and hemp retailers from schools and daycares. This is to help reduce youth availability to these products. This is a snapshot of the research that staff did on surrounding communities that have adopted similar language. As you can see, these jurisdictions not only established minimum distances from schools and daycares, they also established distance requirements from other tobacco hemp retailers. Prior to drafting the proposed language, staff mapped 500-foot buffers around the Morrisville Public and Private Schools and Daycares to determine the impact on any future tobacco and hemp retailers. Really wanted to determine how much available commercial space there would be for these potential retailers. As you can see, this is the overall map here. Here's a few closer images from that map, and after analysis, staff felt that with the 500-foot buffers, there were still plenty of spaces available to these potential retailers throughout the town. Staff drafted the following language to be added to use specific standards for the tobacco and/or hemp proposed use. The site of the establishment must be located at least 500 feet as measured in a straight line from property line to property line from any public or private elementary school, middle school, high school, or daycare facility. Number two, the site of the establishment must be located at least 500 feet as measured in a straight line from property line to property line from the site of any tobacco and/or hemp retail establishment that exists or has been permitted. Staff also proposes adding the following definition to UDO Section 11.5 for this tobacco and/or hemp use. A building, property, or activity, the principal use or purpose of which is the sale of any product that contains tobacco, nicotine, and/or a certain level of THC. This use includes, but is not limited to, cigarettes, cigars, electronic cigarettes, electronic juice, other vaping products, Delta Eight, Delta Nine, other THC products. And that is the end of that section, and if you all would like, I'll pause after each section, because some of these can get kind of dense and have discussion or any questions you may have.
Okay, yeah, I was going to ask if you want to do that, so I guess, I know I have some questions about this, but Rick, let's start with you and see if you, do you have any questions about the hemp section or the retail?
I have no clue. Can you enlighten me on that, please? So does this pertain just to consumer base hemp too, but also industrial? Would that be thrown in there, would that be more of an industrial use? I'd ask for terminology.
Yeah, no, this is specifically for retailers, that is their principal purpose, is selling those products. So it wouldn't apply to gas stations, selling cigarettes, things like that, it would just be a cigar shop, the CBD store that's right up the road that has hemp products, things like that, so...
So retailers, not really...
Yeah, retailers, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Tim?
How do you settle on 500 feet?
Right, so we did a little discussion within, like, internally with staff. Obviously, some of them have a thousand feet, some have 500. All of these other municipalities are considerably larger than Morrisville, so just considering our, just pure amount of space we have and how much space is available to retailers after we do a thousand feet versus 500, that's how we landed on that number.
Yeah, so the challenge with it is 500 feet is walkable in two minutes. You know, so if the purpose is to keep that away from schools, daycare centers, I would even say forest parks, that's not too far. So is there ability to stretch that at least to what Wake County has, any view there?
Yeah, I mean, we can, again, we can do another buffer map if you'd like to view that with the thousand feet showing what's available. Again, we did discuss that, we thought we'd also leave it up to the board's decision, you know, if you wanted to see that or not, but we also felt that 500 feet, with the idea that kids are around and within the school area, the daycare area, was still substantial enough to prevent them from interacting with these retailers, you know, on a regular basis.
And just a question, has there been a view of the market on this? There's a couple of places that already have this. A couple retailers already in Morrisville that do this, is there a huge demand for this, that we're trying to raise that additional buffer?
Well, I think it may not be growing as quickly here as other municipalities, but it is slowly growing, and I think with Wake County making this push, especially for the whole idea behind this as being youth health and, you know, preventing them from interacting with these products on such a regular basis, I think municipalities around Wake County are just trying to align with the county itself and trying to, you know, united front on kind of this push.
I had the same concern that Tim had about the distance, but I have another concern. Why stop at schools and daycare centers? I think it was Zebulon, I'm not sure who included religious institutions and maybe some other sites. Why, why stop at where you stopped?
Well, sorry, I'm yelling, I apologize. Basically, I was instructed to look at schools and daycares. Obviously, through the research, I saw that there were other uses in other municipalities, thinking that if that came out with the board or council, that there may be other uses that you all want me to add, which is fine, I'm happy to go back and do that, but I was primarily instructed to look at schools and daycares in those locations, that's where I started, yeah.
Just do me a favor and go back to the slide that shows what the other towns do.
I think, yes, Zebulon has a number of other uses, so does...
All the others are basically, Greenway is a good idea, I think, public parks, all those things I would like to see included.
Yeah, we can go back, include those uses. Yeah, so if you'd like to see all the Greenways, we should be able to do a buffer map around those as well and just see. That may cover a considerable amount of the town, but we'll see, we can come back and show you something else.
Thank you, I don't think Morrisville has any nightclubs or pool halls or... I've been looking.
If I could add, just from a legal standpoint, your only restriction really is that you still need to allow reasonable accommodation within Morrisville. So that's where those buffer maps really come in helpful, because you can look to see what other properties under this zoning, is there still reasonable allowance for it after we buffer all these different types of uses?
And you did say religious institutions, too?
Yeah.
Chris?
Slide five, it was more around clarification, it said a certain amount of THC. Which isn't really clear, and then later in that sentence it says, or any THC other product.
I'm sorry. Oh, the definition, I apologize.
Yeah, definition, yeah. So my question was around, that's not very clear, a certain level, so you're trying to ban something with a certain level? Is that zero, ten, fifteen?
Yeah, I mean, in all honesty, this is primarily not my language either. This is adopted from Wake County, as well as a couple of the other municipalities that we looked at a minute ago in that chart. I think the language was put in that way for, just to address the Delta Eights and the Delta Nines that you see here, that you have a certain amount of THC, but it can vary depending on what you're buying. So without hamstringing yourself and putting something specific in there, allowing some variability, so anything, any, or a certain level of THC could be zero to 100%, you know?
What are you trying to say, you don't want any of it, you want almost a zero tolerance for 500 around, or are you saying?
Right, so anywhere around that school or daycare or whatever other use we decide to throw in there, yeah, 500-foot, no tolerance for any retailers that primarily focus on these products.
Because that's confusing, that's almost like saying that it is acceptable at a certain level versus saying none.
Yeah, without defining certain, I mean, I have to agree, you got to define certain. If we were to say we got to, you know...
Any, any amount at all, you're saying, is that what you wanted to say? Because you're saying a certain amount, so in theory with that, you could say, well, this is 25-foot from the school. They didn't say what amount, they said a certain amount, so I assume this amount was okay. Probably making it more complicated, but I'm guessing what you mean is...
Any amount.
No, that is the intent behind it, is any amount of THC. Happy to change that, that's language directly adopted from Wake County, and we were just trying to comply with what was already, what they already came up with, but if you guys want to change it to, or any level of THC, any amount of THC, anything like that, I'd be happy to change that language.
Well, even if you left it in, and somewhere in there, that you're still making it very clear the intent is to have none of that, and I don't think that's clear, you're focused around where the retail should be, and from this, it makes it sound like you're saying some levels would be okay.
Yeah, I mean, and maybe just because this is the definition, in the definition section, we could add additional language here under the use specific standards detailing any amount, you know, whatever you guys want, we could throw in there. I think the idea behind the definition itself is just, it could encompass anything THC-related, so...
Right, I mean, this entire industry exists because of a loophole in the farm bill. So, I mean, and it's a legal industry, and I'm not, but they're not going to be afraid to push the limit. If we have a vague ordinance, if we are willing to ban it, we should ban it. If we're, you know, it should be clear.
And there was a case about that recently.
Because even in that sentence, if it said, if you're really trying to say, instead of the word certain, any level of THC would qualify as what's in the banned area, but a certain amount leaves it open to... Just give us some thought.
No, yeah, absolutely.
I think it's a good policy and I think it needs to be implemented.
No, I think you make a good point, in all honesty, when I read it the first time, I thought it sounded odd myself, but I think, again, the, the intent was a definition itself instead of regulating.
But the definition isn't clear, so it's saying a certain level of THC. When you really want to see anything that has THC is going-
And I think that was a way of, again, I think that's a way of them saying, well, how are we going to know in the future this retailer versus this, this product versus this one, they're going to vary in, in certain ways. So maybe this is an all encompassing way of saying any THC. Again, happy to change it to any, I, I, I mean, I-
Yeah, I don't know, I mean, maybe there's a legal definition that we don't, not where-
That's all, I just wanted to bring that up, it was confusing to me, so I'm sure if I was a retailer, I would be doing, well, can I not ask and do this and see if I get caught?
Yeah, no, it's a great point, thanks.
Kristen?
Does this affect any current retailers, or is this just for moving forward if someone wanted to?
Right, so with that 500 foot buffer, technically the one that's at Grace Park right now would not be permitted.
Right.
But this only applies to, that's why it says in the language in here, any, any proposed or, or ones that have been permitted that have not been constructed yet or haven't moved into their space yet.
Okay, so we wouldn't be asking the one in Grace Park to-
No, yeah, so they would kind of be grandfathered in.
Right, okay, thank you.
So, Gemma?
I'm okay, yeah, I have a question about that 1,000 foot versus 500 foot, so.
Okay, you, what was the?
So most of the cities have like 1,000 foot, and there is a reason to be the 1,000 foot, you know? And so the 500 is pretty, it's like, it's not that much buffer area. So, you know, 1,000 would be better.
1,000 would be better, so.
Rick, you've had some more comments.
Can we just, and again, I'm not familiar at all with this marketplace, but can, can we not set a lower limit? But we can, can we set some type of limit not to exceed a certain level THC? Instead of leaving it open?
So one of the challenges, there was something that came up in, in Cary, I believe, around this, where they set a limit, it's usually done by percentage. And there's, I guess, products that are associated with a lower percentage and a higher percentage, obviously. And the challenge that came up is policing that, right? Is that you put that in there and that, to the point made, tends to grow over time. And there's, you know, who says what is? So I think on the issue that we look at is twofold, right? Smoke and nicotine products, right, and hemp products. And so are we, it'd be really hard to kind of police percentages and figure that out.
No, that's the police, you're just saying-
No, but I mean, it's kind of-
Setting a limit.
Yeah, then hope they provide.
And for some reason, something comes up legally or whatever, then we've set a percentage there.
Yeah.
That's there at a limit.
So I agree, I agree, I think it's, it's being clear about the definition and then perhaps widening the circumference there. Should do 1,000.
Yeah, and I will, when we go back and look at some of the language and changes to that, I will look at, there are state laws as far as percentages already, so aligning with those may, may make sense.
Yeah, maybe just doing that, just kind of had, set some type of a threshold. That's just my thought on it. And I just had one other question, since you brought that up, it's kind of curious, just for my information. So if you, you have a facility, like you mentioned at Grace Park, and for some reason that business sold, or it closed and somebody else wanted to open up in there, could they, since there's already been one there or not?
Well, Michelle and I might have to talk about this, but I think if it's, if it's the same use and it's in the existing space, I think it would have to be permitted. I think if we came in with a new, if it was a, if it was a different air, location, a different use, and then another retailer came in and said, well, I don't want anything new, I just want to use this space, then that wouldn't be allowed. I don't know if you agree.
That'd be, yeah, I just wanted to ask, yeah.
Of the code, you could replace a legal non-conforming use with the same use if that space isn't vacant for more than 180 days.
There you go.
Yeah.
So I, and my, and my comments are, you know, I was reading through this too. I mean, I know I can, I hadn't considered fully what you were saying about the size of the municipalities, but I did notice that we aired on the lower side compared to some of the others. And, and I do appreciate the, you know, we don't want to, you know, and we can't legally say that no one can be there, but I would certainly be in support of a larger buffer potentially, and certainly would like to see what that would look like. And I guess my question in that is, you know, of course, this by nature would need to be a retail zoned area. How many retail zoned areas do we have that are outside of these? Any, I mean, there's already going to be a sort of de facto banning of them through most of the town because they're residential zoning, right? So how many of these areas could even host one of these?
Yeah, I think, I think the issue that we run into here versus some other larger municipalities that may have more public schools, we have a lot of private schools and daycares that exist in smaller spaces that are adjacent to other uses that maybe aren't the same in other area, you know, in other municipalities. And that's, that's, that was kind of the concern when we first started doing this, is that we started looking at the location of a lot of these, and if we expand that buffer, are we really limiting the amount of retail on this side? Again, after looking at it, I personally was surprised to see how much space was still available in the town to work with. So again, happy to do 1,000 feet, and it may be the same result.
And then my further question in this is, is it possible as part of this process that we can regulate the appearance of them at all? Is that even something available to us with the current state of laws in North Carolina? Just because, you know, these people have not seen a light that they don't like. They haven't seen a gaudy, ugly storefront that they don't like. I mean, and it doesn't have to be that way. And if in the future, this becomes more of an industry, if it's legalized in North Carolina, obviously we'll have an increase in demand for these types of businesses, which I'm sure is part of why we're trying to do this. It sure would be nice if we didn't have to have 5,000 watts of light blaring out of every one of these types of businesses when people pretty much already know that they're there. At least the people who want to partake in these products are going to know that they're there. And that's part of the whole, you know, if you're worried about the attractiveness to kids, if that's what's driving this, a bunch of blinking lights is attracted to kids whether they are driving by in the back of their parents' car or if their daycare happens to be behind the place, which is like the case in Park West. I mean, at Grace Park. It's like, you know, we're regulating that, I mean, the kids in that particular daycare are never even going to see the place that's in Grace Park. But they drive by the one over here on Chapel Hill Road, and they're going to see that regardless because it's brightly lit.
Right.
And I, I don't know if that's something we can or even should do, but it's certainly my thought process every time I drive by one of these facilities here or in other areas.
Yeah, and I mean, we obviously have already, we have appearance standards, we have light standards, we have, you know, they, they're beholden to all of those already. One of those is not, is no use of neon.
Okay, well, LED is a-
If we're not following those standards, then I will speak to my staff member and out there.
I mean, I, I don't know, I'm just, ma- and maybe we were, I, you know, I do notice that the, like, the Nature's Relief one, it actually looks, you know, nice. It's not that bad looking compared, but I mean, I've just seen-
No, I know, I know exactly what you're envisioning.
You know, this, you know, vape shops are just the kind of place that, you know, is, they go crazy with lighting and it's to attract people, that's why.
Right.
And if we're worried about the attractiveness to kids, then we should live that all the way. And we shouldn't, you know, we either, we're either going to restrict illegal business because, for the children, or we're not. And so if we are, we, we should definitely do it in a way that is not attractive to, to children, in my opinion.
Yeah, and, and I mean, obviously there's a difference between something that's built from the ground up and a tenant moving into a new space. But again, anything, either way, they're going to have to adhere to the rest of the UDO and the requirements that, you know, that we have there, so.
Right, there's nothing you do-
We'll do some more research and, you know, I, again, see what other options are out there as far as limiting because I think you make a good point, is they can get really flashy.
I mean, like, they have super bright lights inside, like, we don't, UDO can really regulate the fact that they have three times the amount of lights inside that they need, which that makes it that much bright.
Right.
There's just a lot of things that you can do, and I appreciate they're trying to, to compete in a crowded market or whatever. But like, you know, again, if it's that, it's that attractiveness to kids that we are trying, that we're using as a basis for doing this, then I think we should consider it.
I'm familiar with the one in Grace Park, and then there's one in the Harris Teeter Shopping Center on Davidson and Crimmon. They're very nondescript, it pretty much just says like vape store or something, which that itself might be an issue. Because I think the introduction into these things starts with vaping in the middle schools. And so kids are going to see that, and I guess, you know, it's up to the retailer to make sure they don't sell it to, you know, someone underage. But I haven't seen anything that is really so lit up and everything that, you know, kids are going to be very attracted to it, but.
The one up on Chapel Hill Road between here and great, and Park West is, it's not as bad as some other areas, but it's definitely different than the two you described.
There's one on 55 as well, it's like one of those shopping centers that lights up and-
I'm sorry, it's just a hard question, that goes back to the market question. I mean, do we know how many of these exist within Morrisville now? Right, and if they, all of those are going to be grandfathered in, basically because of, great question there. You know, shouldn't we take a more prudent approach around really spreading that out? So it satisfies the market but not go crazy on this.
Yeah, so the classification that I started with when I was doing the research, there was one, and that was the Grace Park that qualified. The one on Chapel Hill, I suppose, if you all are saying it qualifies as well, then we could include that, but-
Well, I don't know, it says vape shop, I have no idea what they sell there, but, yeah.
Okay. Within the town limits, there are not, maybe two then, maybe two. So it is a low, very low number compared to other places, so getting, starting this off now, you know, makes sense.
Is there like a definition for what considered it is or isn't? Regardless, just, just my point.
I think that's what Wake County was attempting to do with their language.
Because I think that would answer a lot of the questions.
Yeah.
You know, we talk about this, what's considered this and what's considered, whether you call it vape, you know, tier one, tier two, or tier three, whatever it might be.
Yeah, regardless of how they define themselves, what they call their store, if it has tobacco, nicotine, and whatever language we're using for THC, any of those products. And that's why we always, we always include in UDO but not limited to, because there are other ones out there for sure. So if it has either, any of those things and that's their primary product that they're selling versus a gas station that's just a side product, then, then they would fall in this category of retailer.
So I guess it's, it sounds like, so unless somebody has anything, you know, I, can we, it sounds like you could either give us some more information maybe for next time, or do, can we sort of peel this off from the rest of the items in this? And then circle back to this, or do we, do we need to consider all these in one?
I mean, we have packaged it all into one item, just-
Right, but I'm just hoping the other items don't have as much, if you were going to go back and do the 1,000 foot analysis and everything else, it feels like we wouldn't want to have time to review that. Unless you were just going to send that to the council, I mean, I guess that-
No, I, I mean, I absolutely meant, I'd be happy to come back in front of you all with that, with that additional information if you'd like to see it. That's up to you, we could, we could remove it from this item or-
Well, I mean, I, I don't know what the-
I mean, for me, the only, well, the only thing I would say is on the definition is change the word certain to any, because that's even how you describe it, you're saying any level of THC or any level of tobacco counts. So that answers the definition question. And then if everybody's saying 1,000 feet, it was fine at 500. But if everybody wanted to say 1,000 feet, is, what else is there that you have outstanding?
Well, I'm just trying to think about what the board thinks. We could certainly move forward with this, I just didn't want this discussion to sort of derail the next rest of everything else.
Because, because what happens is I think you're looking for UDO terminology, we had none. So you start out with, we're going to put a standard in place and not necessarily solve the issue of smoke shops near schools. We're putting together a standard is, is what the goal is, correct? We're doing a standard, and right now your directive was do something with tobacco and hemp, which you did. And if that expands, you can always add to the UDO, correct?
Yeah, we could do-
Like, this is an ongoing discussion for a year about what else should be added to this, that could always modify.
Of, of course, yeah, we could always come back and modify this as, you know, as we move forward and maybe as we learn more kind of from this buffer experiment, you know, see how it works out. But also, again, I'm happy to come back with, with additional information in front of you all. We could talk about just one section. And, you know, if you, if you're fine with the other ones tonight, we also, we have three more to get to. So you might have additional changes you want to see or-
Yeah, to your point, I mean, I was thinking 1,000 people would be better, but I'm certainly amenable to the argument about the fact maybe 500 is the right number.
I would want to see the 1,000 foot before-
Right, that's, I think, everybody would like to see that.
Side by side kind of comparison.
But we could certainly recommend 1,000 and you could present both to the council.
Maybe go, maybe you can go the widest that we talked about. So there was 1,000 feet, and there was the additions then of, you had parks and religious institutions.
Parks, religious institutions.
Just see that models there.
But I'm just trying to think about how are we going to craft a statement that covers all four of these other items and this item with these many different changes?
You go back to what they have on page five. So if you look at page five and you go to the language that they have in other places and we, we use that. Is that your, well, you have a list of what the other areas are doing. We're basically looking at, i- is there something we can craft that is close to, correct me if I'm wrong, the Wake County at 1,000 feet with some of these other pieces added, the greenway, the religious, and use that as the model. And then to Chris's point, clarify the language, instead of a certain amount, have it be any. And I think those two things would get us to clarify the language, but then a bigger buffer to kind of show what that looks like.
Sure. And also there is, obviously this is, there is more spelled out language for all of these municipalities, it's an attachment to. If you have not seen it, you can go and I've, I've copied and pasted some of their language into that document as well.
All right, so we'll just move forward, we'll just say recommend the items that Tim just elaborated.
Just one more thing, I assume it's not limited to intervals of 500 feet.
Well, that's another good point.
You could throw 750 in there or-
Yeah, the, we're literally just, everyone seemed to follow suit, so, you know, we did as well. But yeah, any, any distance you would like to see, yeah.
It's good with consistency within the county aspect of it.
Right.
I think that's a good point, I think you have in there.
Okay, so, yeah, I think I've got some direction about what you guys want to see next time for that. If you want, we can move on to the next section. So this is the masonry painting. This is, changes to section 5.9. Again, I did a snapshot of the community, surrounding community research. Sorry, please, as you can see, all but one of the communities permits masonry to be painted. Three of the communities, Durham, Raleigh, and Wake Forest, they have zoning district restrictions. And about half of the municipalities have restrictions on color and paint style. Like back up the, just to clarify, we are, we started looking into this because we were getting requests from different business types, different business owners, asking if they could paint the brick on their business. And it led us to, to research, and it's been on our list for potential UDO amendments for a while, so that's kind of where this came from. So based on that research, staff proposes brick and concrete masonry units to be permitted to be painted in all zoning districts except the historic Crossroads Village. And we are recommending that stone, rock, and tile materials will still not be permitted to be painted. And these are just the footnote sections from those tables. Staff also proposes the following language to be added to section 5.9, point four, point C, point one, point B, one. This is applying color restrictions across the board for all facade materials. Facade colors, including permitted painted masonry, shall be of low reflective, reflectance, earth tone, muted, subtle, or neutral colors. When part of a common development building shall utilize colors that are consistent with, or complement surrounding development, it shall be the responsibility of the property owner to maintain a painted facade and keep it in good condition to prevent a public nuisance. And that is it for that one, that's the shortest section, so I'll pause there again if you'd like to do any discussion or questions.
Any discussion from anyone? Sure, I mean, I can rely on you.
Because I just can't understand why you would paint brick or masonry, but if you wanted to. My only concern is that this doesn't blend into artwork and to murals, because there's separate standards for that. And during that process, we discussed at length applying to brick versus having panels. And so now we're looking at painting block and brick, and so the opportunity to put words- the opportunity to put words, logos, those types of things. So.
It is, it is very small. Very small. I know it's hard to see, but so that is, that is, was part of the uh, thinking behind the wording here, allowing it in all the zoning districts except for this one. And then where it used to say, except for murals, for mural C-section here. So that does not apply for.
But I, I'm fine with this the way it is, but I can still see that it's not necessarily qualified as a mural. It's some patterns that look an awful lot like something. Um, so that's, that's what causes me my concern because you have three different colors that you can use and it kind of blends in and before you know it, it's going to look like the Tana Morrisville sign that you have over there. It's the red colors and it's, you know. So that, that would be my only concern as we start to see people painting that it truly is. I'm going from red brick to white, or I have cinder block that I'm going to paint.
So, yeah, I mean, and.
Wooded colors. I know we have wooded colors in there, but.
Yeah, I, I get your point. Um, it's a good point. Uh, would it be, would you all like to see additional language added in there that restricts it further? Um, when it comes to painting exterior facades, uh, you know, dot, dot, dot. It, it, you're not allowed to do additional colors, you know, anything like that. Trying to think off the top of my head.
I personally would because it's all of the zoning. And there was just such interest over the murals that I don't want it to turn into a creative project because it looks so nice in Morrisville right now with our color schemes. The new signs going in are just beautiful with all the wood and how, how it's placed into the greenery. It, it's giving a lot of leeway to change exactly how Morrisville looks into something very different.
Okay.
Any other comments? I think. Can move to the next one.
Okay. All right. So this one uh, is regarding greenhouses and nurseries. Um. Find my spot again. Uh, so staff proposes an amendment to the principal use table again to change greenhouse nursery use to the greenhouse nursery retail use. Um, and then, and remove that from the TOD district. Um, staff is also proposing adding the greenhouse nursery research use and uh, permitting that in the business activity center, transoriented development, office institutional and industrial management. Um, this, this request is being proposed to accommodate requests from the life science and biom manufacturing industry uh, for needed greenhouse research spaces. Uh, staff proposes the following uh, use specific standards, section four point two, point five, point B, point one, point D. Um, in the TOD zoning district, uh, allowed only on rooftops of principal structures within the TOD east sub-district identified in the comprehensive plan. Uh, number two, greenhouse nursery research use in the gateway overlay district shall not be visible from adjacent streets uh, and shall be separated from adjacent streets by any combination of buildings, walls or similar architectural features. In no case shall a greenhouse be placed within one hundred feet of McCrimmon Parkway. Number three, shall be located on the same lot or zoning lot as a research laboratory or biom manufacturing use. And number four, no outdoor storage shall be permitted. To, uh, also to account for potential effects uh, on site wide lighting levels, um, staff proposed including the footnote seen here in table five point fifteen, point three, point B, uh, exempts greenhouse nursery research use from the light level requirements. And finally, staff proposed uh, amending the greenhouse nursery definition to the greenhouse nursery retail definition and adding the definition for greenhouse nursery research use, uh, which is a facility where floor are stored, grown or tested for research purposes. No items shall be for sale to the general public. And that's it for that one.
All right. Thank you. Um, Rick, any comments?
This is similar to what they're doing in RTP, Alexander Buildings, agriculture research.
Yeah, I think that's the one that they showed us. Yeah, recently constructed. Yeah.
I think, you know, with this close, we should be a player in the market. It's great. We've got the space and there's opportunities. So. I see that stuff at night and it doesn't affect so. Thank you. I just, thank you for the clarification.
So I have some comments. Uh, so I don't like the total exemption of all the lighting. Uh, I mean, a- as it is, you can see the greenhouses in RTP from miles away and on certain nights, you, social media is flooded with people asking questions about them. Um. These are going to be a lot closer to where people are living. Uh, I don't know if you've seen like issues in Detroit with some of the operations in the Canadian side that have these bright purple lights that like the, literally the entire town is lit up with purple, like it is blinding. Um. You know, there are ways that they can put shutters on the greenhouses so that at night when they need to run the bright lights, that it doesn't necessarily bother, you know, everyone in a twenty mile radius. I'd really like to see some of that here rather than just a total exemption from any light ordinance. I mean, we're, you know, and I'm not a, not my backyard person, but I do think that we need to be cognizant of the fact that this is going to be much closer to any residence than any greenhouse that currently operates in this area. Um, and they can be significantly bright.
Um, and I will admit that staff had, did have conversations with that. Um, this is actually was a one research section that was done by another staff member who's not here tonight. So I am trying to present their work, but I, I, so I'll let Michelle jump in if she has anything else to add. Um, I think the idea behind leaving it in there for now was that we, we added the language in here where uh, it shall not be visible from adjacent streets, uh, separated streets.
The question is, why is that language there? Because you're trying to protect people within a hundred feet from this light. This light goes for miles, literal miles. So I mean, if we're protecting people a hundred feet away, we need to think about people who live a little further away because that's really the effect.
We could take another look at that when we come back to you with some of the other changes that you've requested. Um, you brought up shutters as an option. Um, obviously these types of greenhouses, facilities need to be lit in the evening as well. But if there are other options to shield that, we could evaluate that.
Yeah, some, some kind of curtain or shutter just to, you know, to help the light stay within. I mean, I know there's a limit in the airport and there's a reason why because it's really bright. I mean, that I, I've just urged you to look up the issues people are having in Detroit where it's like people are having to buy blackout shades because it is just so bright, especially if you have a low cloudy night. I mean, I'm all for this type of research and, and, you know, but when there's a way that can be a win-win for everyone, you can have the greenhouse and still protect, you know, people who live several miles away. I think that's worth looking into.
Okay. Yeah, we'll look at some examples. Maybe there are, um, I haven't seen any of the shutter options myself, but I'm sure there are.
I mean, so I haven't really seen the specific options. I just, I know that's something that has been cited in these multiple articles that talk about them.
Okay.
And that was the, that was a, um. Any other comments? So then I guess we can make a motion to.
Oh, we got one more section.
Oh, we have one more section. I'm sorry.
This is uh, pretty straightforward. This is uh, amendments to our stormwater management maintenance, uh, section seven point four. Um, we do have stormwater manager Ben Mills here in case you, you have any questions about these omissions, but um, essentially um, it's to uh, it's to comply with session law twenty twenty-three dash one zero eight. Uh, this prohibits the collection of stormwater maintenance, security cash payments. Uh, it also caps the amount that can be collected for associated escrows. Um, so the stormwater team got together. Most of the section is just an omission of that, of that language. They did add this letter here F, a statement of acknowledgement that, that the association shall continuously operate and maintain the stormwater control and management facilities. So I will skip ahead because this is all of that language that's omitted. And if you have any questions about that, like I said, Ben is here to answer them.
Any, any other questions? Um, I mean, it's pretty straightforward. We have to comply with the law. So.
All right. Um, so obviously with staff recommendation, we recommend approval of the proposed UDO text amendments with or without changes. Potential options, uh, PCB can recommend approval of, of the amendments as is, recommend approval with changes, which were already discussed, recommend denial. And um, and this is actually the ordinance language. Um, and then the board is asked to hold a public comment session tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Um, I, do we have anyone here that has a public comment about these items? Uh, no one is here for that. So we, I will open and close the public comment session. Thank you. Um, do we have any board comments before we move on? So I guess we need to make a motion to either approve or deny this. I guess it sounds like most people are in favor of approving with the changes that we had previously discussed.
Or could we just approve the stormwater management? I think that the only one that doesn't have any opposition or potential revisions and then go back and revisit the others?
I think Michelle's gonna.
Okay.
I think just from a staff perspective and from time management with town council, it would be preferable to track everything together um, at the same time.
So I, I, I guess if we were to simply state that we were to recommend approval, if we decided to do that of this with the inclusion of the items that were discussed at the meeting, would that be adequate for record keeping and on your side?
Yeah, I think that's fine. I, I do know there were requests for additional information, additional maps, the comparison I think we're asking for. So um, there is always the option to continue it for the board. I come back and, and show you the changes being made and then, then you can recommend, do your recommendation next month. It's up to you as well.
And so that's something that I mean, we're not going to be.
I thought, I thought we settled on a thousand. That was going to be our recommendation. So is that the map you're talking about?
Yeah, I thought there was some additional requests for.
Few comments. That, that's why I was concerned earlier. Um.
Cause I was kind of tracking. So where, so where we were on was changing the word certain to any thousand foot. We would add parks, greenways.
Basically aligned with Wake County.
Yeah, in line with Wake County. And then from Masonry, we'd take another look at.
Was more inclusive?
Yeah.
Yeah, more inclusive to include the parks, the greenways, similar to the slide for, it's in there.
Mm-hmm.
I would like to see what that looks like. I mean, taking into consideration the size of our municipality, like you said. Um, I would like to see what that looks like before.
I think we were going to show you a map with those additional uses um, being buffered as well. Yeah, as you can see. Which is perfectly.
Aspect would be great. And just for point of clarification.
Timing? I mean, is there any push from where the other timing wise?
No one is necessarily waiting on any of these amendments. So that is at the discretion of the board.
So then it sounds to me like I think we have a pretty good consensus for continuing this and doing it to the next meeting. So we have a motion to continue this to the next meeting?
Motion to continue this at the next meeting.
Second.
All in favor? All right. Appears to be that the five normal members are unanimous.
Sorry, Brooke. I just closed the whole thing. All right. Thank you very much. I'll see you all next month.
So now we can discuss the meeting calendar. Oh, yes. I'm sorry. Well, no, actually. Well, you're next technically, but it probably would be better to be this way.
Good evening, Chair and Board. Caleb Arndt, I'm the Planner Two Transportation for the town. And tonight my presentation is um, an overview of how our development regulations are applied to right of way improvement, road improvements. I put together an agenda for, for tonight's presentation just to keep myself on track if anything. Um, so first we'll talk about some development requirements. We have two primary development requirements for right of way improvements, uh, road widening improvements. Um, they come primarily from the comprehensive transportation plan, um, as well as traffic impact analyses. We'll look at a development, an example development that covers both of those items and then we'll summarize uh, kind of what we talked about before any questions or comments. So uh, the, the comprehensive transportation planner, the CTP, it was adopted in twenty nineteen. Um, it utilized data from traffic counts of all of our major roads in town, future NC DOT and town roadway projects, town, the town land use plan, uh, and additional community feedback, um, to come up with the recommendations on bike, greenway and pedestrian, uh, sorry, greenways, bike lanes and wide sidewalk, um, recommendations as well as ultimate right of way or roadway cross-section improvement. For, for all the roads here in town. So all developments are required to construct their half of the ultimate cross-section along their property frontage as well as dedicating the right of way for the ultimate cross-section across their frontage. Um, so that include, that would, that would be again, half of the right of way or half of the cross-section, half of their right of way. And then if there's a circumstance in which they cannot construct those improvements, they can apply to pay payment in lieu of those constructions at a hundred and fifty percent of the cost of construction. That isn't, that is to be applied. And then the uh, planning director and the town engineer will, will coordinate on a determination of acceptance or not based on the circumstances for which the application is coming in. This is an example of what those ultimate cross-sections look like in the CTP. We have two primary types of, of cross-sections. We have standard cross-sections, which are on the left side of the screen here. Those are cross-sections that are applied to a broad array of, of roads and road types here in town. Um, so for example, you might be on Morrisville Carpenter Road or Davis Drive or um, Town Hall Drive. And you might have one standard cross-section for all of them. Additionally, we have cross-sections that are specific to specific roadway segments. And that's shown on the, the right-hand side of here. So there are specific segments of roadway that have their own unique cross-section. Um, and I know it's kind of small, but for example, how we apply these, uh, the, the widths of these improvements, we have an ultimate right of way, which is very small here, um, or very small right here. And then we have our standard dimensions for, for lanes, standard dimensions for medians. Um, we have alternative dimensions for very specific circumstances. We have bike improvements, sidewalk improvements, uh, and, and utility strips, which are the strips of grass between sidewalk and curb and gutter. So in addition to CTP requirements, we also have TIA requirements. Those, there, there are stand, as opposed to CTP requirements, which are uh, applied to any development with a, with a property frontage on a roadway. TIA requirements are specific to the project itself. So we have a couple of thresholds that require a TIA. Resonings or developments that trigger either a hundred trips per hour or a thousand trips per day. Resoning to a land use that is inconsistent with our future land use plan or a, a resoning that is uh, to a more intense trip generation use. And then finally we have changes to an approved development, or sorry, to an approved development that's not fully constructed, that has a TIA of, of two or more years. And those will be big changes to development, not necessarily like shifting a sidewalk, but land use changes that change the calculation for their trip generation. So the process of development review starts with a, with a pre-submitting meeting with the applicant. And that's where staff sit down and we tell the applicant all of the requirements uh, based on the site plan that's given to us at the time, their pre-submitting site plan. So uh, the, I say my question, the transportation planner's question for that, that pre-submitting meeting is, do we meet the thresholds for a TIA? That's the very first question. Um, and, and so what we ask for, for that developer is a trip generation memo sealed by a traffic engineer that indicates what their trip generation will be. If those other thresholds haven't been already confirmed, that's what we would do. And so this is an example of the uh, chart that would be provided within their memo. Of course, the memo would have a write-up associated with it. So for this example, we can easily see on our subtotals of our trip generators that we're meeting both a hundred trips per hour and a thousand trips per day. So it's a pretty good indicator that we. So it's a pretty good indicator that we definitely need a TIA here. My apologies. Get the whole slide in there. Oh, my gosh, it's getting worse. So our next step in the process, so you know, in our previous chart, we concluded that that TIA is necessary. So our next step is the transportation planner for the town will have a a scoping meeting specifically with their traffic engineer and NC DOT if necessary, as well as the town's on-call consultant who reviews TIA, is the traffic engineering firm that reviews TIA's for the for the town. And to note that 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 review fee by that traffic consultant is paid by the applicant. So in that in that scoping meeting, we, the the UDO has standards for a lot of the the things that are covered in a TIA, but we might answer some questions that they have about the project, and we might also conclude our our study area for the project. And so our our big topics that we generally discuss are our trip distribution as well as our study intersections. And so there are examples on the screen here of both of those of trip distribution. So you know, you're coming or going from the site onto a roadway network. How do people disperse through a roadway network when they leave or come to the site? And so that's determined at the point of scoping meeting so that they can apply those to the to the TIA. And then our study intersections, we we look at our the intersection that are close to the to the the development and and which ones should be studied, which ones have traffic congestion problems that that we really need to look at. And then to wrap that up, they then submit a memorandum memorandum of understanding, an MOU, to memorialize the things that we talked about that they need to do in this TIA. So some additional things that if if it's not clear to them when they get to the scoping meeting that we talk about in there, make sure it's clear, things that are required in the TIA. We need traffic counts to be collected at all of our study intersections that we've concluded. We need those to be done during school hours or, you know, during school days so that we we also include the traffic from schools. And then we might, oh, please.
When you say the collective traffic count, do you mean they have the person that goes out there that counts beforehand, right?
They they actually have counters that are put out there at this point.
But still, sometimes it's a person, but some some way actually beforehand, they're counting what's currently there.
Exactly. Yes, exactly. Thank you for that question. So so we do, they they would go out there, they would collect the traffic counts at all of their study intersections. If we're so part of that scoping meeting is if we have a if we have a TIA that was approved on the corridor previously, those counts, maybe that that development hasn't been built yet, and so those counts can't be counted on the roadway network. So that's where we say, hey, we have a TIA for this other development on your corridor, include those traffic counts in your study. And so that at that point, we would send them the TIA's that are approved for them to include those in their study as well. The standard requirement for growth year over year is 2%. So if their development is going to be built out in like six years, they have to apply a 2% growth rate growth rate to the traffic counts and the traffic, the traffic counts that they have ons that they've counted, they have to apply a 2% growth rate year over year for that up to one year after the development is completed. And so that's where they estimate to us when their development is going to be completed, so we can apply that growth rate. And I don't say we, it's more them and their TIA. And then all of the land uses that are assumed in that TIA, so so when they come to us for that pre-submitting, they'll have all their land uses and their square footages. And so that's when you can use the the transportation, the Institute of Transportation Engineers, IT Handbook, which is used nationally for traffic engineers to calculate how many trips will be, you know, taken from each land use and each square footage. And so they'll they're they're required to use that data to conduct their analysis. So there's a modeling software that traffic engineers use to to create their TIA's. It's called Synchro. The town does not have a Synchro subscription, so that is something that is that file that goes in that software application gets sent along with the draft TIA to the consultant to review. And that way they can confirm what's in that Synchro file and that everything looks appropriate per per the the program. And and I include a little exhibit of what a Synchro file looks like because the 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 traffic engineer will literally build out a road network of our existing road network and then project traffic volumes onto that road network, see where the delays are, and then project turn, you know, lanes that would cover and reduce that and mitigate that traffic congestion that's created. And so that's an example picture here. I love to include it. It's very interesting. Okay, so we talked about developing a TIA and what goes into a TIA. But what do we have to mitigate when it's time to to decide, you know, how how we mitigate the the transportation, the traffic that is produced by that development? So per the UDO and and also in tandem with NC DOT standards, they have to maintain level service D as defined by NC DOT, and those definitions for all the level services are are shown here in this exhibit. If the future service is already at or below level, or I suppose it's below, if it's already below level service D and that's rated A to to F on a scale, then they're required to maintain that level service. So if you're projecting out of that 2% growth rate and you're and you're realizing, oh, wow, it's already below D, they're required to maintain that level service that's existing and not add to the 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 traffic delays that are that are projected out. And then just to note, the the mitigation that we're talking about, they're generally turn lanes. So they'd be left-turn lanes, right-turn lanes, maybe additional through lanes and or adding stacking to those lanes, so lengthening the lanes that exist today. Those are those are the types of improvements that you should expect to see to mitigate traffic congestion. And so my personal most exciting part to the presentation, we have an example. And so this is a a real-world example. It is on Watkins Road. It's a development called Discovery at Watkins Road of but I'm recently learning that it's a different name now. And so this project was approved, and this is an interesting case case subject because not only do they have road improvements that they have to do, but they also had to conduct a TIA because the development was large enough to trigger those those thresholds. And so Watkins Road was their only road frontage. They actually had road frontage on both sides of the road, which is unique. So there's a section of that road that they actually have to build the whole cross-section and and dedicate the full right-of-way. And so this is what their site plan looks like, and we'll actually go to the next slide and talk about what their requirements were. So a cross-section 4A is a standard cross-section for Watkins Road. There's 100, 120 foot right-of-way, and that variation includes your turn lanes. So like the the standard cross-section here is 100 foot right-of-way. But if you have turn lanes, right-turn lanes, it needs to be a little wider, and so we give a little wiggle room in there for that. And so we have a four-lane median divided thoroughfare with sidewalks on either side. So that's they have to build that full cross-section if it's not already there. In addition, they had TIA requirements and recommend and improvements highlighted in red here on your exhibit to the bottom left. So those included turn lanes into their site, left-turn lanes into their two-site driveways, as well as two right-turn lanes into their site driveways, and then both their driveways had to have full access movements in either direction so that you you need to be able to turn left and right out of their site on both their driveways. They did add a driveway during review, as you can see here in the middle. And so that was dictated as a right and right out with that right turn in. So it is a restricted access for for safety. But it's it's so we have our, it's originally a two-lane road out there. If you drive it out there right now, you'll find it's two lanes because they haven't fully built out yet. So we have our two two lanes that are existing in green. And then their widening is going to be shown in yellow, so they they have to add a lane on both sides of the road. And then they have to add a median through through the center. And again, this is unique because if they do have frontage on both sides of the road, in a in a more traditional circumstance, you would be expecting half of the road to be widened. In addition, in red here, we have our turn lanes into the site driveways, and we have our right-turn lanes shown in red. And of course, we have our two full movement accesses as well as the right and right out shown in the middle. And so that's how we take those two requirements and we kind of mend them together on a site plan when we're reviewing. And so in summary, all developments that front a roadway that is not constructed to its ultimate cross-section are required to widen their half of the cross-section and dedicate that right-of-way. In addition, if one of the triggers is meant for a TIA, they also have to conduct that TIA and construct those improvements along with the the widening of the right-of-way or of the cross-section and dedication of the right-of-way because they have to mitigate their impacts on the system. That that's what's required. They're not reducing the existing, you know, traffic congestion, but they have to mitigate what they're producing from their development. And without, I'm happy to take any questions or or comments that you guys have.
Thank you. So do we have any questions, Shazam?
So who who would be the, you know, the town's third-party consultant?
So the town's third-third-party consultant is a traffic engineering firm from out of Fuquay Varina. It's called Mount McDonald. And so the town hires them for, you know, they're on-call, so various things that we could we could have them come in and perform for us, but their primary responsibility is reviewing those TIA's.
I don't have any comments, but this was really helpful, so thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Mine's the same because it's important that we're able to share how the reports are done because we get so many people that ask us, are the TIA's right? Are they true? And it's really important that we're able to communicate to them how they're done and that they feel confident of so that this was a good overview. Thank you.
Is there a minimum capacity of the development that is assumed?
I'm sorry, I'm not quite understanding the question.
When you're doing the traffic impact analysis, is that based on 100% capacity, a minimum of 80% capacity, you know, of the development?
Oh, I see. So to clarify your question, you're saying that there's obviously going to be a range of traffic volume produced from the development, and what is that? What are we assuming for that range? So that's where that IT handbook comes in, and and what the what the handbook is, is a there's studies of all these different land uses, and then they take the average, and there's a calculation involved. It's generally not a linear curve. They're they're usually, it depends on on a lot of different factors. But each of these land uses, they have studied studied similar land uses around the country, and that's where your traffic volumes come from. So it's usually a fixed number. They're usually not variable.
And that's what is in that top, one of these first slides, like it talks, I think, about that, correct?
That's correct, yes. And I'll go back to it so you guys can see it. So that's where we have land use code 220 and 760. Those are both from the IT handbook. And you know, you have your classifications. It's based on intensity and and the multifamily in this example is based on dwelling units. So they use dwelling units as their factor for their trip generation. And then the research and development center is based on square footage, so then the square footage is applied to the calculation to to conclude a a trip generation from, and you have hourly generation, you have AM PM peak, you have all-day generation, weekend generation. They're they're all they are all used as long as they have enough data points to conclude that that it's it's a reasonable amount of generation.
So I guess it's 100% of whatever this number is that they the whole.
Yes, I'm very long-winded, but that's exactly right.
So first of all, just thank you. This is really helpful to see the the rigor and the detail that goes into, specifically the traffic impact analysis, because I was always harping on that, frankly. Question for you, how do you account for the things that don't trigger? With the rapid growth in Morseville, a number of developments would pop up along a specific road that didn't trigger an impact analysis. How is that flow accounted for in the wider view when the pace is that quick?
So that's a great question. And so what I would say is these these TIA's, obviously, there's a little bit of guesswork involved in the TIA, in the development of the TIA. We're using data to guess, but we there is a little guesstimate there. That's where we we would hope that the development, first of all, if it develops larger than that, obviously, they're going to have a TIA. But for some of these small ones that you're suggesting, we would hope that they would be captured in the traffic counts themselves. Obviously, if they're under development, we wouldn't be able to count those, but they would be such a small percentage of the total volume that we can it would be part of that variation.
Question, just curious, where do you get the 2% growth number?
So 2% growth rate is a is a NC DOT standard. That is because our communities in North Carolina are growing at a very rapid rate. And so in other parts of the country, you might find a much lower percentage. So this is a particularly high percentage of growth rate. But we utilize NC DOT's expertise to help us develop those requirements.
So it's an average of the state?
I cannot conclude that's an average of the state, but it is their standard based on the data they've collected.
Questions pop up? Thank you. That was very helpful. It's interesting.
Sure, yeah.
Probably not as interesting as you find it, but luckily people do find it that interesting to help us with the data that we need.
Yeah, sure. That's what I'm here for. Thank you, guys, for your time.
Thank you. Okay, now I guess we can go to seven C.
Since I don't think this one's going to take very long, I might just stay here.
Just do it all, yeah.
So the next item on your agenda is a proposed meeting calendar change. There is a conflict with your next regularly scheduled meeting in April, so we do need to look at another date for that. What we are proposing is Thursday, April 4th, so that would be one week before your normal meeting. We did check with all members, and based on that, it sounds like all but one can attend. I believe member Toterai had a conflict on that date, so do want to let you know that. Planning staff and IT staff are also available that night, but that is what we are proposing is April 4th. And at this time, we think that the only item on the agenda will be the continued discussion on those UDO amendments. We are also a conditional rezoning for HSNC is making its way to you. Small possibility that could be ready, but that's more likely looking like May. And a possible CTP amendment related to the TOD is also looking like that will hit in May. So anticipating that the only item on that agenda would be continuation of the UDO amendments.
Do we need a vote on this?
You would need to vote on it, yes. You'd need to vote on updated 2024 meeting calendar.
Sorry, I had a personal family matter come up. I'm going to be gone third through the seventh.
So we'll still have.
You still got you still got members.
So any discussion? Do I have a a motion?
Make a motion to amend the schedule, the meeting schedule for 2024?
Second? All in favor? We pass out unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Planning newsletter.
Move on to the planning newsletter, and you had some meeting cancellations, so a little bit more to go over than we might normally have to share with you. But in terms of new site plan applications that have come in since our last meeting, there was an application submitted for a medical office building on Nova Drive, so that is undergoing staff review right now. And then the Timber Pack LLC is actually a special use permit, so that one will not be coming to you, but that will be going to town council. It is a wood recycling facility that is proposed on International Drive, so wanted to make note of that one as well. In terms of town council approvals, town council did approve the Main Street Plan Development rezoning for Town Center and the Spark Master Sign Plan, both of which you had reviewed. In other news, we continue to work on a number of other long-range projects. A lot of those are in the affordable housing and transportation arena. So we are continuing to work with Habitat for Humanity on a potential partnership for a project at 101 to 105 Church Street. Those discussions are ongoing. We had a. Those discussions are ongoing, um, we had a touch point with town council on that just this past Tuesday, so we'll be doing some additional research, um, into that, and see if that will be a viable project moving forward. Um, town council did also talk about affordable housing at their January retreat. There's a little bit of a change, of course, on that one. Um, if you remember from, um, prior discussions and updates, we were exploring a potential down payment assistance program. Um, ultimately, town council has decided not to move forward with down payment assistance. Um, however, we are going back, um, and looking at a potential rental assistance program. Um, and a lot of that was just due to, we were looking at about a hundred thousand dollars per household for down payment assistance, so a lot of money, um, to help, um, a small number of people, whereas with rental assistance, you could help about thirty for seventy-five thousand. Um, so that was probably one of the larger factors in that discussion, but we are back looking at rental assistance options, and, um, there'll be some more discussion and evaluation of those. Uh, moving on to some of the transportation items, um, the Morseville Parkway, uh, Comprehensive Access Management Study, um, continues to move along. So if you are not aware, Phase Two Public Engagement for that is live now, and that will be open, I believe, through April seventh. So I encourage you to go look on the website. We do have, at this point, recommend, recommended changes, um, to that roadway, um, primarily focused on enhancing safety. Um, so very much do encourage you to take a look at that. If you are interested, um, senior planner Kittredge also gave a presentation on the recommendations to town council Tuesday night, so if you're so inclined, you could receive the information that way as well. But I'm encouraged you to, to look at and take that survey. It will inform, um, what is in that final report and final recommendations. Uh, Sturb Iron Creek Mills Spring Greenway feasibility study, um, continues to be underway. And, um, just wanted the fiscal year, uh, Wake Transit Annual Work Plan. Um, and that is really part of kind of their budgetary process. Uh, but public engagement or public input on that is being taken through March twenty-sixth. And that is all I have, Chairman.
Thank you. So, uh, board comments, Rick? Any comments?
Thank you very much.
Agreed, good to see everybody.
Just a question, Park West, did that move forward?
Um, that is a good question, um, because I think that was one of the last items, if not the last item, um, that the board removed. They are, um, they were scheduled for town council. But they are taking another look at the plans, reevaluating some items. So, um, we have yet to see what changes they may potentially make to that plan. Um, once we find out how extensive those changes may or may not be, we'll have to determine if that needs to come back to you, or can, can, continue straight to town council. Um, but it's kind of paused for the moment.
Well, I'd like to welcome both of our new members, and glad to have, uh, back to a full-strength board. And a good presentation tonight, so thank you. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? All right, thank you, we are adjourned tonight.
It's a good introduction, I think, just sort of see how things work.
Guys have a good night.
I guess I won't see you next week, see you next time.
Right, yeah, yeah.